For being with us for our county commission work session today. We're going to get some updates on work being done in our fire districts. And we're also going to, after that, talk about emergency management services and budget planning around that. So we're going to kick things off with Tim Flora and Chief Ryan Cole on the fire districts item. And so I'll turn it over to you guys to get us started. Thanks, everyone, for being with us today for the work session.
Commissioners and county government, thank you very much for hosting us today and allowing us to go over some of the things that you have brought to our attention to try to outline how we're working on some of the areas in the fire service. We had a committee that was formed to include Jeff Angel, Steve Jones, Jeff Justice, Anthony Penlin, Randy Ratcliffe, Ted Williams, John Wilson, all worked on parts of this presentation. And so at this time, we want to go ahead and jump straight into the presentation. And I'm going to let Tim start off with some of the areas that they have identified from county management. And we want to thank county management for their extending cooperation and assistance with this and thank Mandy for her help and Tim and Michael Frew as we've worked through this. And I'm sure we're going to have many more things that we're going to accomplish as we move forward.
So since this is sort of a budget work session, I thought it was important, since you as commissioners play a pretty big role in deciding the property tax rate, I thought it would be good to sort of do a financial overview of the various fire departments. So sort of my goal of my piece of this is really to sort of talk about the financial position, sort of explain the role of the county as in relation to the fire department finances, sort of explain the major components of the fire department finances and give it sort of an analysis of the financial condition. As well as, since, again, you do set that tax rate and since we collect and distribute those tax revenues to the fire departments, I thought I'd kind of give you a little overview of how that works at the county and sort of discuss some of the options that we have looked at and discussed through this committee and as we've been getting out in the fire departments these last, in the community, the last few months. And then other, just as, some other considerations that we want to look at, as that sort of, sort of came up to surface, came to the surface as we had those and began those discussions these last few months and just continue with the relationship that we have with those fire departments. And so in regards to the financial, this is a slow computer. In regards to the financial position, really sort of, one of the things is every year we, or we have a contract for services with these volunteer fire departments to provide sort of fire and rescue services. It's the county's responsibility, but we contract that service out to these volunteer fire departments. And so what, as a result of that, those fire departments submit budgets to the county. We review those budgets. You as commissioners set those tax rates, determine the tax rates for each of those departments. And then, again, we collect and distribute those revenues. And so as a part of the requirement of that contract is we do require the fire departments to get a financial audit every year and to submit those audit results to the county. And as a result, I think this has been going on, I think we've required that now for at least every bit of the last 20 years. I think it's been since before 1999 that we've required these audits. But for at least over the last decade, the finance department has been taking that financial information from each of those audits and has put them in sort of a database. And so we have been, we have been tracking their financial information. And as a result, we really have developed several sort of analytical ratios that we use to sort of assess the financial condition of each of the, of each of the fire departments. And so some background, there are, I believe, 19 fire departments that we contract with. 16 are nonprofit entities. And then three of them are embedded in other municipalities throughout the county. And so last year, the total revenues for all of these fire departments was $24.4 million. And of that, 70% is a result of the property tax, of that tax rate that you set for those fire departments. 20% is, they get 20% of the revenue from sales tax distribution. And then the other revenue is a result of, some fire departments have ambulatory service and so they get some EMS revenues on top of that. This is just a map highlighting the fire service districts to sort of show you what the tax rates are. Really, the range of tax rates for each of these fire departments runs from anywhere from eight and a half cents all the way up to 16 cents with the mean or the average being somewhere around 12 cents. So there are seven ratios that we look at in the finance department. We're not going to talk about all seven of those ratios. And I'm just going to briefly describe two of the ratios that we look at that we sort of feel like are the more important ones. And the first one is the operations ratio. And this really is just simply looking at the dimension, determining whether the annual revenues are covering the annual operating expenditures. And really, all this is, is just taking their total revenues and dividing it by their total expenses. And really, what you want to see is you want to see a ratio of one, which basically says we are getting enough revenues in to cover the annual, the annual operating expenditures. And so up here, what you see is, and I know it's kind of hard to see each of the different fire departments, and that's why we've given you the presentation in front of you if you want to sort of look at the numbers. But basically, I'm showing you two fiscal years back to back to kind of show FY16 is on the left, kind of shows that the majority of those fire departments are getting the revenue in to cover their annual expenditures, a few less in 2017. And so when you have a ratio that is less than one, really what that's showing is, just for that year, there were sorts of revenue shortfall. And that is why it leads us to, the second ratio we look at is really is what are the reserves that these fire departments have in order to cover those shortfalls? Because if you don't have the revenue in that year, you have to go, you have to get that money somewhere. So it's usually out of, out of your reserves. And so, you know, we as county government have been having the same discussion with you, the board, these last several years about, you know, what is sort of that right reserve to have? Because especially if you're receiving taxpayer funds, funding, you want to strike that balance between having enough reserves on hand to sort of manage those cash flows and contingency needs without having sort of over unnecessary tax revenues. And so we look at several factors that influence what is really sort of that appropriate reserve level. And really, it's the size of the organization, it's that volatility of revenues, the tax burden on our constituents, as well as looking at those environmental factors and those contingency options. So taking all of those factors into account, you know, we in the finance department sort of like, well, what would be that appropriate sort of reserve level that you should have? And based upon these factors, you know, we sort of feel like that that appropriate reserve level is anywhere between, you know, three months to a year worth of reserves. You know, I keep wanting to call it fund balance because that is what we call it. But you need to keep in mind that I'm not referring to it as fund balance because fund balance is a very specific term to governmental accounting. And most of these fire departments, or all of these, most, all of these fire departments, 16 at least, are, operate under, as a nonprofit. So they have a different accounting structure. So how we measure what those reserves would be for them is by looking at their current assets to total operating expense ratio. And really, what we're looking for, if we want something between three months and a year, we really want a ratio of .25 to one. And so here, this next graph sort of shows what that is. And this ratio is really sort of, is, shows really how solvent these fire departments are. And it's important because we really want to know if these fire departments have enough resources available to withstand sort of a financial hardship and then how long they actually can withstand it. And so these two graphs, again, this is FY16 and FY17 data, you'll see really what we consider our sweet spot is anything in between those two purple lines. And so you'll see that most, all of them hit that mark. One thing that's important to note is that we are not wanting to make a judgment call on those departments that actually exceed those reserves because, again, we don't know the internal workings of these departments. And I know that several of these departments have a specific plan on how, they may be saving money up for an engine or major equipment, or they may have a substation that they're saving up for. So I really don't want to speak to those that may have a big reserve because I suspect that in every one of those situations, they really, those funds are assigned for another reason. But where I do think is an area that we want to look at is to at least ensure that these fire departments at least have three months' worth of reserves on hand. Because as we'll illustrate here in a slide or two, their cash flow is sort of an unequal, it's unequally distributed over the course of the year. So we want, we want to make sure. And again, I also want to point out that these are, the numbers that we're looking at is a snapshot in time. And so you really don't want to look at these in an isolated situation. You really want to look at these really how things, how they trend over a period of time. And we had a slide in, in here that sort of illustrated how these fire departments worked over a period of 10 years. It was a little bit complicated to sort of have to walk you through that. But trust me when I say, if you look at all these fire departments over a 10-year period of time, you will see while, there may be some fire departments that have a lower reserve today, that necessarily wasn't the case a couple of years ago and probably won't be the case in the future. So I just wanted to sort of point that out. Briefly, I want to talk about sort of revenue distribution because the county does collect and distribute the property tax to the fire departments. And currently, the way we do it is, we do this on a monthly basis. We, we, the county, collect property tax every day. Every day taxpayers are paying their tax bills. And then once a month, we sort of sweep those accounts and then we distribute what was in each of the respective fire department's accounts. We sweep those accounts and we distribute that to the fire departments. For sales tax, that actually comes from the state. We, the state collects it, collects it, they distribute it to us, we allocate it, and then once a month, we send that to the fire departments as well. So really, the fire departments from the county are getting a cash distribution once a month. And if you look to the right, you'll see a chart of how their revenues are received. And just like in the county government, the majority of their revenues, 52% is received over a three-month period of time, that November, December, January, which is when most property tax owners pay their tax bills. And so there really is an unequal distribution of their revenues. And so the fire departments are receiving a big chunk of money at the beginning of the year, they're receiving some other money throughout the year, but they have to sort of make that, that money last through the year. And that can, that can present challenges. And I think as we've sort of recently seen and heard of, that that has created some challenges for some fire departments to do. And so through this process of this committee that we worked on and talking to some of the board members and talking to the public and you, the board member, and our board, we, we as finance sort of felt like that we should offer up, that there are options from, for revenue distribution. And so one of those is, you know, a level distribution. We know at the beginning of our fiscal year what our tax levy is, and we know with 99.9 certainty of what we are going to collect in those property taxes. And so there would be no reason why the county could not sort of take that, divide that amount by 12 and give equal distributions to the fire departments. Also, we could really sort of consider a variable distribution frequency, which just means, you know, right now, we're doing it once a month, maybe in the more leaner months of the year where they're not getting much, we could just increase the number of distributions we do in a month. And then finally, there's an option that we have been exploring, which is sort of a flexible contingency funding plan, which really just is, in the case of major catastrophic events or unusual circumstances, you know, the county could sort of advance those revenues to the fire departments. Again, I think a good example of that would be sort of like the Party Rock situation where fire departments had to use their own operating funds to go out to help fight this fire. FEMA was approved the funding, the funding reimbursement, but it really took a year to get that funding to the fire departments. And so there would be no, there would be no reason why the county couldn't sort of, as an intermediary, because that money comes to us anyway, is we know we're going to get the money, we could go ahead and advance those, those funds back to the fire departments. Looking at those different options, we did sort of, this is just sort of lays out the pros and cons of each of those options. Really, the monthly distribution is easiest to execute, but, you know, there is a cash flow unbalance. Then the other three levels, you know, we could go with that level distribution. That would be something easy to do, except the county would have to advance those revenues early in the year. Again, not really a big situation for the county. We are a big organization, we have those funds that we would be able to take that hit. And again, we're going to true up at the end of the year anyway. So at the end of, at the end of the year, both organizations may hold. And again, the pros and cons of the other, the variable distribution frequency, that is something that could be done. However, the, the impact of that would be sort of minor. But I think that flexible contingency funding is something that we might want to look at. The biggest con to that would be, we would just have to determine what a qualifying event would be. But again, that would be something we could easily do if that would be something that the fire departments would, would like us to do, or if that'd be something the board would want us to do. I'm just really sort of providing these as sort of options if there is a situation where we would want to consider these things. And then finally, I just want to talk about just some other considerations as we've been out in the community, as we've talked to the fire departments, their boards, citizenries, is that some of the other considerations that we might want to consider is, you know, I think we as the county could provide, provide some county assisted training for the fire department, fire department board members. I know there's lots of turnover on some of these boards and there's no reason why, you know, we are sort of the, the constant factor in a lot of this. We are the, the one who is contracting for the services. We have a level of expertise at the county that we could sort of offer some assistance, whether it becomes legal assistance, financial assistance, helping board members or the fire departments. As well, you know, we regularly update our fire district agreements. And I think maybe some of the things we might want to consider in the future is maybe standardizing some of the financial reporting. We get pretty good information from that, but there are two or three different types of financial reporting that we get that we would like to see standardized. I've also heard that there are a few things that we might, as a county, want to require in those fire department bylaws, that maybe we could consider that as a requirement in their bylaws. And as well as, I do sort of feel like this is something I sort of feel strongly about is that we should consider in our service agreements that we adopt some kind of operating reserve policy that the fire, fire department should operate. And then finally, you know, this is not something new. We've worked with fire departments for many years and we've collaborated with them on lots of efforts. And I think we just continue as we move forward, just to explore more ways where we can collaborate, whether it be through shared services. You know, currently, right now, we do lots of shared services with IT, but maybe we might want to look at sharing services financial-wise or HR-wise, legal-wise. But as well, I think something just as easy as leveraging the power of, excuse me, leveraging sort of our sort of communications PR infrastructure and doing something just as easy as getting, raising the awareness of volunteer firefighter needs. So that really is the end of that presentation. But one thing I did want to sort of highlight is the fact that, you know, like I said, we have been tracking this financial information for several years. And so we've been looking at it, this is something that we've been doing for years. And we provided it to the boards, prior boards, on a, on a pretty consistent basis. But I think one thing moving forward, we might as well take this information from the back office and sort of project it to the public. So one of the things that we are looking at doing is providing this sort of fiscal analysis tool of the fire departments. Since we get that information every year, since we have these ratios, what we're thinking within probably, by the time you get to the point where you start looking at their budgets, we will have this fiscal analysis tool that will be out on our transparency site, which will allow you to drill into each of the fire districts. From there, you would be able to see, you know, what their tax rates are, the history of those tax rates, you'd be able to see what the revenues and expenditures are. We probably could provide you a link to their financial statements. We can give you the number of calls for service. We could probably also do have links to their respective websites so they could get more information on that. So this is something that we, we have a prototype. And if we had time, I would love to show it to you today. We really don't have that time today. But something over, I think, the next several weeks that we would be able to get out to you that would be a very useful tool for you commissioners as you review the budget request and trying to decide, you know, what those fire departments need. But it's also a great tool for the, the fire departments and for the public, should they want some additional information. So that is my very quick, high overview of the fire departments. Again, I think this is going to be, if you have specific questions about specific fire departments, I think this tool that we're talking about here will be a really useful tool for you moving on. And so with that, we'll move into the next phase, which is a discussion of firefighter pay. And so I will turn it over to Chief Cole.
Before we start that, it's my understanding that about 2008, the former county manager instructed the fire chiefs that they could never raise the tax rate. You know, it's not, you know, we don't need to debate whether it happened or didn't happen, but that information, to my knowledge, was never brought to any commissioners. And so I think it's important to get more information about that. Also, I, as we, as we do this, I'd like to see a breakdown of all the calls they go on for nonprofits and see how that factors into their budget.
Absolutely. I also have a key announcement to make, that there's been more pizza ordered and more, there's been, there's, I forgot to announce at the beginning that, that there has been some more pizza ordered and some plates. So that should show up at some point, so please help yourself.
Also, I've got a request for whoever's in charge of the lighting. You don't, we don't have to go from one extreme to the other. If you could kind of be in the middle, I think most people can see the screen. It allows us also to see, just, so I have a, just for the lighting, whoever's in charge of it, you don't have to go all the way dark for us to be able to see those screens. If you could go somewhere in the middle, it'd probably be more pleasant and also allow us to be able to read the, to be able to read this. And if you can't hear that, you might need to turn that thing up a little bit.
Turn this off again.
All right. Thank you very much again for having us here today. A couple of things as we go through this, some of the stuff, and one of the things that you as commissioners highlighted to us previously was that, was on the firefighter pay. And so that is something that we have done some research with, with the North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs, allowed us to participate with that and be able to derive some information out of there. With this, we also, some of the things that we're going to come up with and discuss besides firefighter pay, cost of service, the EMS effects on fire service, unfunded mandates and, but more importantly, also possible solutions. So before we, as we're presenting you with problems that we're encountering, we also want to present you with, with optional solutions and some possible alternative funding. And so as we go through, through this, the pay studies, I said, derived from the information from North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs, North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs, and by the way, I just seen the pizza come in. So brownie for the information there. Everybody wants to go back and get some more pizza, it's on the table. 10% of the departments in the state of North Carolina participate. We have about 1,200 fire departments in the state of North Carolina. And approximately 30% of those departments in North Carolina have some form of paid staff. So that's actually a pretty good participation route that we have in there. And the counties that was chosen all had some similarities with Buncombe County. We chose Alamance, Cumberland, Durham, Forsyth, Guilford, Iredale, Johnston, New Hanover, and Wake because they all either had similarities with the fire service and the way the makeup of the fire service was in those counties, the population in those counties, the living wage, or the cost of living. And so with that, going into the firefighter, looking at the firefighter position, you'll see that in all of these slides, Buncombe County is somewhat to substantially lower than the other 10 counties, or the other nine counties that was surveyed and so, that was used in the pay study. And so if you see this, the starting pay is in blue, the maximum pay is in red. So if you're pay scale, if you're looking at a pay scale, it goes from the difference between the blue and the red. The engineer position is a, historically, that is a driver engineer. They take care of running the truck, getting, getting the water on the fire and everything for us. So you see that that is also lower, but not as substantial as the firefighter. Supervisor, which would be for us considered a company officer, is also lower. The closest to that is probably Alamance County that you'll see there. And then the manager, which is usually a, our shift supervisor, shift manager or a district manager, again, that's close to Alamance, but the rest of the counties are elevated above that. We also have in here the deputy or assistant chief, and that is substantially lower than the other nine counties as well as fire chief. Now, one of the things I would tell you, we had a, we have a couple of departments in Buncombe County that the fire chief's not a full-time position. So that does bring our numbers down just a little bit, but that's only two positions out of the county that was used in the study. The rest of them were the full-time positions. And that is substantially lower than, than you see in a lot of the other ones. The next page that you see here, going down the left-hand side, is the Buncombe County average pay. And that's the starting and ending, so the 29,358 for firefighter is the minimum, 41, 906 is the max. So that's your pay range between 29 and 41. Then the next, the next column is the average with Buncombe County included. So that's using all 10 counties. And there is a $4,355 deficit between the average pay of Buncombe County firefighters and the average pay of all of the 10 counties. The next column that you see there is the average pay without Buncombe County, excluding Buncombe County, just the other nine counties. Because as you could see with the information, there was a disparity in Buncombe County with all, in all of the positions, and so we showed that without that. And so as we go down through here, just looking at the minimums, for firefighters, about $4,300, for engineer, $2,400, supervisor, about $6,000 for the starting pay. A manager is about $8,000 difference, for a deputy or assistant chief, about a $12,000 difference, and fire chief, about a $27,000 difference on the starting pay on all of those positions. And that's averaged in with Buncombe County. The next thing we wanted to look at was cost of living. New Hanover County is the same as Buncombe County in cost of living. All of the other counties, looking at the cost of living was less than Buncombe based on the information that we were able to obtain. And so we do have a significant higher cost of living in Buncombe County, which averts to many of our firefighters in the fire departments live outside of Buncombe County and work inside Buncombe County. So a lot of our firefighters are actually from McDowell, Haywood, Henderson, and Yancey, different counties outside of Buncombe that's coming in because it's more affordable housing in those areas. And so they're, they're living there, coming in and working in Buncombe County, which presents us a problem on New Year's Eve when we get a nice storm and we need those firefighters close by to be able to go to work and they're stuck in other counties and we can't even get them here because of the disaster that's occurring. The next thing we did is average living wage. And what this is based off of is, as I'm sure all of you are aware, the MIT information that's out there, they, they have different areas in the living wage, and it's all dependent on how many people is in the household and how many is working. And so we took all of those numbers, averaged them out for each one of the counties. And if you'll see, Buncombe and Alamance are very close, it's similar in the living wage. And Forsyth and Guilford is significantly lower, and I say significantly lower, you're only looking at about $2,000 difference is the maximum difference in the living wage. But Forsyth and Guilford is lower than Buncombe, but the, all of the rest of the county's living wage is higher. The next couple of slides, or the next couple of pages you have in your handout, I'm not going to go over all of these, but you'll see, this is each department broke down. By each department, the green, if it's highlighted in green there, that means that they are meeting the average of the 10 counties in there. And if it's not in green, then they're all below average. And that's for the different positions and by each department. So it is kind of an individual. And so now I've took each department and put that out to where that, for the average pay of all of the, of the entire department and for a firefighter. And out of that, out of the 19 departments, three have needs minor adjustments to their pay scale, whereas 16 needs significant adjustments to the pay scale. So you can look down through there and see what the averages is for all of the positions in those departments and for the position of firefighter and see how that, how that lays out. All the departments offer some form of health insurance. The percentage of the department pays towards family varies between 0 to 100%. 11 of the 19 departments offer some type of supplemental or accidental insurance. 12 of the 19 departments offer life insurance. Only five departments are on and are eligible for the state retirement system. And that is the three municipal departments plus Skyland and West Buncombe because they were able to get into the state retirement system back in the 80s. And now the rules of the state retirement system do not allow for that. There has been some attempts with that, with state legislation to be able to get fire departments in. We have been working on that. And it's actually an IRS issue, so it's on the federal level of doing that. And so we're, but we will still continue to work on that on the state legislation. Two of the 14 departments offer other retirement plans to substitute for the state retirement. And 11 of the 19 departments offer 401K. Buncombe County fire departments, on average, are between 2,451,000 below the average pay scale of fire departments. scale of fire departments in the state of North Carolina that was used in this pay study of the 10 counties. 16 departments need significant adjustments to pay scale and/or starting pay of positions. Three departments need minor adjustments. Now with this, some of the things, when you're looking at the pay, one of the, one of the issues with that is, we've got, that is one of our significant issues is pay. We recognize that, we see that. The fire departments have done, have historically been very conservative in, for their communities, for the constituents, and try to keep that down. However, one of the things to be able to, be able to get that paid where it needs to be is going to require additional revenue to come in. So as we go through this, one of the things that I want to make you aware of is with that additional revenue option, we also want to put out, as we said, some possible solutions that might be able to minimize the impact on the constituents, whether that be through other types of service fees or other things that could be brought out. And so we'll talk about that towards the end. But as far as, and this is going to be dependent on each individual department, how this affects each individual department and how each individual department needs to address this, and with this, for the most part, looking at a lot of departments, it's about, probably, you're probably looking at about two, about two cents is about what the cost is going to be to get those averages up to where they need to be, and with a $250,000 house, that's about $50 per homeowner. And so next, we have cost of fire service, Randy, I'm sorry. About $50 a year, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, $50 a month, $50 a month on that. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. Thank you for correcting me. Randy Ratcliffe and Jeff Angel.
I want to make sure, is this on? Okay. Before we move on past the pay, and so I'm looking towards Tim, and one, I want to thank y'all for this information. I looked at it before, it was, it's, it's a very good job. But you know, when we're looking at, and we're talking about pay, it's a very sensitive issue. It requires a lot of, a lot of discussion and, and analysis, but a lot of times we'll gather information, and then there's not a solid, clear recommendation. Say, for example, for the entry-level pay, you know, what would that be exactly, what it would be? How much, you know, would it cost, you know, in certain departments and things? So I mean, as we think about these things going forward, you know, it'd be good to have, I'm sure the fire departments would love the detailed information too, to be able to have that to make these, you know, whatever decisions might be made.
Isn't it right that the two cents going up to...
Cents or $50 a year on a $250,000 house would make up that difference?
In some departments, some of the ones that I've, and that's going to be in individual places. Based on that department and what their needs are, because as I said, some of the departments need significant adjustments to their pay, or some of them just need minimal adjustments. And so these departments will have to look at that and determine what their needs are going to be, and we're going to provide all this information, not just the information about the impact of the pay set to all the departments, so that they can look at that and see if it, what is that.
And then what percentage of firefighters live outside of the county, do you think, if you're going to guess?
If I was, if I was to guess, I would say probably 40, probably about 40%, 30 to 40%.
And one last question. What's, so we know 920 is the starting pay for some, so what's, we've talked about this before, what's the starting pay at Burger King, Chick-fil-A, fast food restaurants?
Chick-fil-A, I'm not sure, but I know Chick-fil-A on Merriman Avenue just posted last week.
13. 13, yeah.
We need to do something. We can't keep talking about it, like Joe said, it's absurd.
And this is something I was about to say until the end, but I'll go ahead and say it now. Our most important thing amongst all of these fire chiefs in this room is protecting our community. To best protect our community is to have quality people.
Right.
Doing a quality job.
You're right.
For them to be passionate about what they do, and for them to be passionate about what they do, we've got to make sure that we're giving them what they need so they can survive and be able to take care of their families. We have a lot of firefighters in this county that if they are a single family, if they're a single working family, they're on COVID-11.
Right, right.
In other words, if the firefighter works and dispatch does not work, they're on COVID-11 and they're eligible for government assistance.
All I know is, I became a commissioner in 2012, and we were talking about these salaries then, and how many firefighters go to sleep at night or go out on a call worrying about paying their rent? It's absurd and it's absolutely wrong.
And I don't know of any firefighter that only works at the fire department, all of them work together.
Right.
That's right.
And so whenever you look at firefighter position, it's 56 hours a week that you're working, and most of them are averaging about 80 hours a week because of the jobs that they're doing on the side.
And I want to say before we, before we go on, that the firefighters, supervisors, every department in this room in Buncombe County do an amazing job. They're, I mean, that's what this is all about, is an appreciation towards those departments and looking at how we can, how we can be better. I don't think we have to carry an easy button with us though all the time and hit a two-cent, you know, increase. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of ways to achieve these goals and do it, you know, in a very, very, very responsible manner. And I just love this information. The only reason I mention something to Tim is it's always good to have information, but let's process it and make recommendations down the road, and I know, I know we will, but I'm, for one, if it hadn't been said, you know, excited about what can come from this, and it's just a great opportunity to get together and hear this information.
And so I'll add that all of these organizations work together seamlessly.
Right.
Yeah.
Sunday, I don't understand why it was Sunday, Sunday was the hottest day of the year. I couldn't tell it was Sunday. I think today's probably the hottest day of the year. We had more structural fires on Sunday in the county than any other day, and every department was going to other departments, and that's what we do on a regular basis. And everybody was backfilling other stations when we were going all over. We had fire trucks all over this county going some areas, helping somebody else out because of the work that all of these people do on a daily basis, work together.
One question.
Thank you.
How much basically, if you lose a firefighter, what's it costing to retrain?
As far as, as far as doing the retraining and equipment, because it's obviously if it was, if it was me and my equipment, it's obviously not going to fit somebody else, and that's one of the things that Randy's going to highlight, the cost of the equipment. But you're looking, I would say, across between taking a weapon out of the oven from getting somebody where one, replacing that one off way back over.
So are, at some point, is somebody going to talk about the non, responding to non- okay, okay.
Good afternoon, folks. Glad everybody's taking a little bit of time of their afternoon to come and see this presentation. We'll start off, it, it is said that emergencies are a local problem with a local solution, yet the cost of everything associated with the fire and EMS response has grown far, grown at a rate far exceeding the inflation rate or the cost of living index. While most of the added costs are due to increased safety features, the problem lies over 10 years, the cost of both have risen anywhere from 40 to 750% or more, putting the replacement of this equipment out of reach for some departments or in a minimal putting it off for years. Grants have offset the cost in the last few years, but grants are competitive and far and few between. We also participate in GPOs across the United States to help with driving down the cost of operations. So what we're going to talk about here, you know, are basically to outfit somebody to fight a woods fire, put them in stationware, and a structure fire, and then we're going to talk about the cost of engines and trucks. As you can see, 2007, for wildland gear, roughly $1,079. Where in 2017, we're over $6,300. That's an increase of neighborhood of about 40%. Or actually 175%. Should have looked at my notes here. So as you note through these, as you look at the slides or look at your presentation and all there, you'll see radio on all these, and radios are key to be able to take and put anybody in the woods, put anybody in a structure, or answer calls, because you have to have the communications with your other firefighters or with the EOC. Cost of putting somebody in structural gear, 2007, just over $7,100, and 2017, we're over $14,000. And again, that's about a 50% increase. Stationware, which we don't have to replace stationware that often, but if you go back to the turnout gear, footnote at the bottom, gear has to be replaced every 10 years, and that's due to regulations set forth by the National Fire Protection Association, who basically is an industry standard for the fire service. Station uniforms, we replace these, I know in our station and all there, as needed, once you outfit somebody, but to get somebody up and running, that's going to cost you about $5,900 in 2017 versus $1,200 in 2007. Here's the big expenditures. You notice the footnote at the bottom, figures do not allow, or do not include annual testing, service, or cost of fuel. The life expectancy is maxed out at 20 years on an engine. Most, most all these departments in here will keep an engine at least 20 years or more. And Oswinnoa's got several pieces of equipment. We've got one, it's a 1987 model that we still run, it actually ran on a structural fire last night. So again, the cost of these things are dramatic. As you can see, the base cost of $440,000 versus $600,000 10 years later, and the cost of just the equipment to go on it, which is above that base cost, goes up. If you take into account, a lot of stations, they'll buy commercial chassis. You can drop the cost on those by about $200,000 if you go with a commercial chassis, but if you go with a commercial chassis, limiting on the number of firefighters you're able to transport on one vehicle at that. One other piece of information I've got here that came in late, as far as tankers, which are water tenders, average cost of that in 2017 was $355,000, where in 2007, it was $275,000. Ladder, which I know Asheville, I think, is in the process of beating out a ladder at this point, average cost in 2017 was $1,050,000. Back 10 years ago was $620,000. If you go with an elevated platform, $1.3 million versus $820,000. Again, these costs are driving basically the operation. The guys joke with me, they aggravate me all the time and all there about, you know, buying this, buying that. Well, I asked them, I'll tell you, research it out, we've got to find the best possible price we can, because we just can't go out and buy whatever, whatever, whenever. They laugh at me because they'll come with something, and I'll say, I think I sent a coupon for that the other day in the paper. I clip coupons for the fire station because I clip coupons at home. I treat the fire station's money as it is my money, you know, because I want to extend it as far as I can. That's the reason you see some of the graphs that you've seen and all there, that we're in the position that we are in. We're not on top, we're not on the bottom, but we are surviving alone. For the longest time, we were stuck at 10 cents, and that, that drove, drove the cost of a lot of things out of our range. We're in the process of beating, or hopefully beating out in the spring, a substation. We are in the process of a ladder needs assessment with the help of Chief Burnett from Asheville, which we know, we know the outcome of that, and so we are looking at another million-dollar purchase for a vehicle, plus we have a truck that needs to be, it's time for it to be replaced also, so.
So does all, do all the fire depart, do, does each firefighter have all three of these, these sets of clothing?
Yes, they do.
Wall fire, structural gear.
In our department, in our department, the paid staff, whether it be full-time, part-time, have all that. Volunteers typically have all that too, depending on their certifications. If they are not certified or have not been to wildland class, the North Carolina Forest Service and all there doesn't like for anybody to be on the line unless they've had a Forest Service class, Forest Service classes and all there, just because of the protections and the liabilities and all there.
So that's a yes. Yes. So each one of them have that, right?
Yes.
So as we analyze this, in the information here, we have the radio in there three times, and they'd only have one radio.
They only have one radio, so you can deduct that out.
So if you add them all up, it's like 26,000, but it's really probably 16,000 to outfit a firefighter, right? Okay, thanks.
And, and isn't it right that this is regulation? This is not because you choose to do this, you're, you have to do this, correct?
Yes, when it comes to the replacement, when it comes to the replacement of gear and the trucks and all there, that is all stip, that is all regulated by the National Fire Protection Association. They are guidelines, they are not per se standards or rules we have to follow, but if something was to happen to one of our firefighters in a fire and we did not at least try to adhere to these guidelines and standards.
Right, absolutely.
Then we would be in more financial burden than, than our insurance companies could pick up.
Right. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Justice, I'm the fire chief out of Rims Creek, and I'm going to give you a quick rundown on fire departments that operate EMS systems, and we've got six of those in Buncombe County that operate on the paramedic level. I'll try to get us caught back up on time. There's two different ways that fire departments handle employing paramedics. One is a paramedic that's cross-trained as a firefighter. That means he's certified as a firefighter, he's also certified as a paramedic. The other is the fire service-based system where the responder only goes on EMS calls. You ask what the difference on that is, is pay and trying to make the pay equal. EMS workers, if they do only EMS work, is required by Fair Standard Labor Act to be paid overtime after 40 hours. Firefighters typically are paid on a 56-hour work week at 212 hours. So we're trying to work out, this is all fairly new for us, but where they'll get equal pay for doing both firefighting and paramedic work. Fire department analyses are not a new thing, with the exception of Fairview and Skyland, the other departments have been providing a primary response and transport. Rims Creek since 1970, Fairview's had an ambulance since 72, Riceville since 64, Lester since 68, and Barnersville since 64, and Skyland had an ambulance since 78. The only exception there is Skyland and Fairview, where recently they started covering their fire districts to transport. Everyone else has been the primary EMS unit for their fire district since those dates that are provided. This was talking about the pay issues with paramedic versus firefighters. A paramedic's on the 40-hour work week and the firefighters are on the 56-hour work week. If you've got a paramedic firefighter, he's essentially doing double training. He has to keep his certification up as a fully certified paramedic, and he has to keep his certification up as a fully certified firefighter. So we're trying to get that equaled out to where they're going to get compensated to be both. If, if we don't do that, then they're going to pick one or the other. If, if we don't do that, then they're going to pick one or the other. The immediate issues we're having affected, we're just like Buncombe County EMS, and it's a shortage of paramedics to fill open slots. That is statewide. I don't think any county you go to in the state of North Carolina won't tell you there's not a shortage of paramedics to fill the open slots. New healthcare limits payments, North Carolina, when the Affordable Healthcare Plan came in, refused Medicaid expansion. That dropped a Medicaid patient to $60 or $120 for an ambulance bill. That is all you get paid. You get either 60, or if it's an advanced life support, you get paid 120. That's far less than the roughly $500 that, that you're billing out for. Medicare increases, there's been no Medicare increases in several years for any EMS systems. Hospitals now became the primary patient care facilities, so they're at full capacity. So, our turnaround times, just to get the patient off of bed, they're lengthy. So, we may send an ambulance to Mission Hospital and wait one hour to get them transferred. Well, that's one hour that somebody else may need help that we can't respond to. EMS, the hospitals or the EMS equipment is costly. One example is, is the defibrillators that are on every fire engine in Buncombe County, cost about $1,500. Every EMS truck defibrillator costs about $40,000. The difference is, is our heart monitors, and, and when I say ours, I mean every paramedic truck in Buncombe County, whether it's Mission, medic, whoever, they transmit all that data directly to the doctor. So, when we hook that machine up to you, the doctor will see that in real time when we push the transmit button. Our drug shortages have driven up prices. We're not exempt from things that the hospitals are on the news. Anytime that a drug is shorted, you can be guaranteed when it is finally available, it's doubled. The opioid epidemic has caused several problems. The cost of Narcan has become unreal. It's went from $10 to 45, 50, to almost $100 if you can get it. And then the other toll that we're seeing now is the retreat trips for the same patient, and the stress on the EMS worker. When we have certain patients that we go to three or four times that are in cardiac arrest from opioid overdose, that's wearing down our crews. That's why they're getting out, going to other jobs. North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services regulates everything that every ambulance in North Carolina has to carry, the standards we all have to meet, and we're now at a national standard. We've made a national standard across the United States. They can come in tomorrow and give us a new mandate for a new piece of equipment, and by next week, or whatever their mandate is, we have to have that on a truck and have training and have it working. Citizens of Buncombe County understand that they will get the closest EMS unit that'll handle, that can handle their emergency. So, if you live in Black Mountain, you may get a Rims Creek ambulance. If we're the only ambulance system, the closest ambulance, we will send the closest ambulance. That has always been the rule for a 911 center. Medications used in emergency situations got to be climate-controlled now. So, that means when these trucks go up here on these zero-degree days at Mission Hospital, they have to sit outside and run. Anytime they're outside and not in the station, they, to be plugged up, they've got to be running. You've got to keep the drugs at a certain temperature. Everything has to be climate-controlled. Mission Hospital stopped restocking EMS units, so the unit must be returned to base to be restocked. So, if we have three or four calls and don't get back to base, we have to put that ambulance out of service until we go back and get restocked. Had initially was a Medicare law, that's since been rescinded, but Mission still doesn't restock our trucks. I don't even know if we've been in talks with them for that, since it's been rescinded, but certainly that was a big, big cost factor for us, and it was a time-consuming, keeping the trucks out of service. Past 10 years, cost have doubled, like everything else, but reimbursements have remained the same. It's just, we're in the same boat everyone's in in the United States, really. We've got a healthcare system we're going to have to work on, and we're trying to do the best we can to make sure the citizens of Buncombe County get the closest help and the best possible help, regardless who it is.
Okay, I'm Anthony Pillen, I'm the chief of the Swananoa Fire Department, and I'm here to talk about some unfunded mandates, and I'm not going to go over this list for the, for the time purposes, but, and I don't know if unfunded mandates is the right word. The reason it's put up there is we just want to let you know that there's things that are driving what we do. One of the things right now is, in Swananoa, at this time, I am being inspected by the Department of Insurance. They are inspecting 13 fire departments throughout this, next week. And the Department of Insurance comes in and they look over everything, look from our charter all the way to the equipment that we carry. We have to be a rated fire department in this state in order for our citizens to get a break on their insurance. If we are not a rated fire department, they pay what's called an unprotected insurance rate, and that means it's astronomical, the cost. The Department of Insurance will come in and they'll tell us what is recommended for our fire departments to, the equipment that we need to carry, the personnel that we need to have, but it's all based on what the National Fire Protection Association is the recommendations. And I want to talk to you about maybe three of those right now. One of them is NFPA 1710, which basically tells us how many personnel we're supposed to have. And that is driven by what the Department of Insurance says we're supposed to have. So, therefore, that increases the cost that we have when you have the volunteer fire service that has declined over the last decade by 12%. More and more departments going to paid staff in order to cover that standard, therefore increasing the cost for the fire department. 1901, it's already been mentioned, 1901 is basically the standard on how we build fire apparatus. It covers everything from the emergency lighting that's put on there, to the Environmental Protection Agency requirements on the diesel that puts off of it. So, that jacks up the price of that truck. Now, we can go back and say, well, the Department of Insurance says you just need one truck and one tanker. Yes, if you want to stay at a certain rate. In order for us to lower that rate down, we may need two trucks, two tankers. We may need that ladder truck, we may need that extra station. So, all this is driven by DOI and NFPA. And the last one, talk about the NFPA standard, is the turnout gear. We talked about the $16,000 that it costs to suit up a firefighter, but now, we all know that firefighting is a dangerous job. Just your heat and the stress put on the body, but then you add the fact that the cancer-causing agents that things are made of, that now get on the turnout gear of these firefighters, NFPA is now recommending two sets of turnout gear per firefighter. What happens is, is when a firefighter goes into a structure fire this morning, ideally, he needs to take that turnout gear off, put it in a wash machine, let it wash, let it dry, and we're not talking about just a regular wash machine, there's a special wash machine that goes along with that. And then, at, at most departments, mine included, I don't have an extra set for him to put in. So, I either don't follow the standard, because I'm going to be short of firefighter, or I try to get his gear washed, get it dried while he's on duty, because I don't have another set to put him in. But that is a push across the nation now, and at the, at the state level, they've increased the, they're now considering cancer as a line of duty death. So, if we're considering a line of duty death, then the fire departments are going to have to figure out how we're going to prevent that. And one of the things we've got to do is, we're going to try to get all of our firefighters into two sets of gear. If not, they're going to have to take that stuff, and we, we don't let them come into the bays, or the day room, wearing that gear, to try to keep it off the couches. So, there's just certain things that have been driven that the fire departments have to do in order to make it safe for our firefighters. And then, the last thing I really want to talk about, is I want you to understand the services that we provide to those untaxed properties. I know that has been, that was a question that's brought up a little while ago. Each district probably has certain properties that are untaxed, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the fire service doesn't respond to those properties. And so, we look at our expense side of the response to those properties, but the revenue side does not offset that expense because there's nothing collected. And to me, I'm not really sure, I understand the, the untaxed part of it, as far as property tax, but the service that we provide is almost like a service fee per se. It's almost like you're going to need the fire service, hopefully you won't need them, but some are going to need the fire service more than others, and they're getting it for nothing, while the taxpayer over here who's paying the tax doesn't call us. I've been paying taxes in my district for 49 years now, and I've only called 911 once. So, I've given thousands of dollars to the Swananoa Fire Department and used them one time, and you've got some untaxed properties that have used us on average of 160 times a year. And so, those are some of the things that, you know, if we look at that ratio that Tim was talking about, the revenues are not going to continue with the expenses if we continue to go down the path that we're looking. You talk about raising the tax by 2 cents. To me, I would like to see some type of ratio as to if everybody in the fire district was paying the same thing, then would it be a 2-cent increase, or would it be a half a cent increase, if we all were on the same playing field? I look at it as an insurance policy. I pay a car insurance every year, have never used it, but if I need to, it's there. If you pay a tag or a service fee, you may not ever use the fire service, but it's there, and everybody's on the same playing field. It's not just on the backs of those taxpayers for the untaxed properties. I don't know if that's possible, I have no idea. But I do know that it'd be interesting to see, because some of us, on average, are 150 times a year going to these untaxed properties.
So, for instance, in the east, in our end of the county, Ridgecrest, do you know how, which is a non-for-profit, do you know how many call, and it's a conference center holding conferences, and so people, a large amount of people come in from out of the area, do you know, and we have to respond?
Well, the town of Black Mountain covers Ridgecrest, and I know that my partner over here, John Wilson, is going to let, he had some numbers, so, John, the fire department itself responded. Okay, he's, he's pulling it up right now.
I, and you know, it doesn't, but it, it doesn't make sense to me. It's considered a non-for-profit, but it's a conference center, it adds to the population, and frequently called for service.
Absolutely, yes.
Ridgecrest is 63 times the fire department?
63 times for Black Mountain Fire Department.
93 times for all the other agencies.
And 93 times from agencies. So, the other agencies would be the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, and I'm going to guess Buncombe County EMS. Now, EMS could offset their, their response up there, because they could bill the person, but the fire department, no, the expense to that, the fire department would come from the other people who are paying that tax, and then the expense to the sheriff's office would come from all of the county taxpayers, because you, you fund the sheriff's office.
And what about Warren Wilson?
On average, we go about 165 times each year to, 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 to our non-tax property. Now, you understand this, is I know that just recently, there's a planning meeting on a piece of property in Swananoa that currently right now, we get a tax on it. And we're, we haven't responded to that property in 10 years, and the only reason we responded to it then was for a structure fire of the house that was on it. So, it's been sitting for 10 years vacant. But the planning department is getting ready to have a meeting based on untaxed, untaxed entity that's going to come in and want to buy it. So, now, once they purchase it, then the revenue generated is gone. So, now, theory is, it's going to be like a medical facility, which is going to increase the expense of us going down there to answer the 911 calls, even though the revenue is not going to offset the expense incurred. So, you're going to see the ratios continue to go in the opposite direction if we have to continue to use reserves and offset expenses for these services that we're providing for people that we're not collecting a revenue for.
Well, Highland Farms, which is now Gibbons Estate, that took how much off the tax rolls? Highland Farms, Gibbons, because you respond to Gibbons, Highland Farms, right?
We respond west here, 161 times from the fire department, 325 times from all the
But yet, when you respond to Black Mountain Center, which is a state facility, you get reimbursed?
Yes, all state facilities that we, that are in our fire district, the state has a ratio that they actually will pay the fire department. Now, that ratio is nowhere near probably what the cost of going there is, but it does generate a little bit. I don't, in Swananoa, we generate about $900 in, in revenue, and so, but unfortunately, I can't tell you where the state property is that we are covering.
Right.
I was just thinking it's down at the North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, and all the automobiles they have there, that's, that's the only reason I think we would get that. So, but then again, we haven't responded down there.
Right.
We don't, it's not a routine that we go there, but we routinely go to some other places that, you know, it's just, it's just there. And I don't know if, I mean, I have no idea what the solution will be to, to do that. And it's not a situation where I'm up here standing and saying that everybody ought to do their fair share, and all the non-tax properties ought to pay, you know, the churches should pay, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it'd be interesting to see the ones who are using the service compared to the ones who are not using, as to what that ratio would be, so that if we do want to raise firefighter pay, and this is my opinion, if we do want to raise firefighter pay, and we do want to make sure we meet all these requirements, it's not on the backbone of our citizens.
Right.
Not all of it.
And, and technically, you're called a fire service, services in your...
Yes, we changed that here in the county in 2015. We signed it November, and it went into effect July of '16. We're now fire and ambulance service districts.
So, do any place, can any places implement an emergency services fee?
I don't know, that's...
I don't think so. I mean, I think the conversation here is about what's exempt by the Constitution and primarily Chapter 105 of the general statutes, as we talk about exempted from taxation by legislation.
But we're not, we're not calling it a tax, we're calling it a service fee?
Well, the service, the service districts, we switched from the old Chapter 69 Fire Response District that we voted on for the service district to allow more taxes to be levied, but that doesn't fix its problem, there's, the firearms aren't stuck at 10 cents or 15 cents that it used to be, now it's the room for like 53 of $1.50 that's available for taxation. And this is the same conversation that happens every year, legislature starts considering new exemptions or how to raise caps in tax offices of screen, how to, how to adjust it.
But if it was, if it was a service fee, clearly a service fee for calls, how is that a tax?
I think you just give it a different name, because it's Fire and Ambulance Rescue Service District, that's just a vehicle for the county to afford those services in that district. So, I think it would require legislation to perhaps say that these entities can be exempt from real profit taxation on a local government level, or maybe they would be taxable for fire and ambulance rescue services.
The, the rest of, you know, down here, the fire insurance versus the fire tax, we've, you've already heard about how we are, the Department of Insurance comes in, they rate us, and on average, right now, the classification in Buncombe County is a five. So, it's saved millions of dollars to our citizens and, in their insurance rates. And the fire insurance versus the fire tax, basically, you know, the fire tax is collected, it's given to the departments, the departments use that as their source of revenue in order to try to meet some of these requirements set forth by DOI and NFPA, in hopes that we can keep the insurance rate down. And those things kind of go hand in hand, so the lower the fire tax, the, the lessens the ability to do the services that we need to, therefore, that which would raise the insurance premiums. And then, if you keep the fire tax a little bit up higher where we can do the services, then it kind of keeps the insurance premiums down. So, they actually do, they work together. But, and then, we've talked about the working together, that's something that, I remember when we met in spring, how we called it the Buncombe County Way. If we met every NFPA requirement, the tax rate, it would be so high, it would be unbearable. So, we have to rely on each other, and that's why we go from, we're automatic aid to Black Mountain, they're automatic aid to Swananoa, it's the only way we can do it, or we're going, we don't have enough personnel to do it. So, thank you.
If you're, if you're initially ready to begin whatever it's supposed to do, help screen the firewater pay, you know, to give it to that, to be yourself, but in terms of insurance rating, it would necessarily make an adjustment there, right? And that's just unlike, you know, more equipment and things like that, might trigger change in the insurance rating, doing the works or compensation for the employees, that's probably not going to have any...
It, it probably would not affect if you did the ones that are currently there, but if, if other, other sources of funding was to generate additional revenue where you might could hire another one, then that would, that could possibly do it there. But just to say, everything across the board right now, we're just going to take care of the ones who are there as of today, it wouldn't have any effect on that at all, but...
As far as recruitment retention goes, then you're going to be able to increase that recruitment retention, bringing more people in, which would help out with your insurance rate because you're able to shore up some of those, because you're going to increase, if you, if you hit the pay where it needs to be, then you've got part-time people that's wanting to come in, you've got volunteers wanting to be part-timers hopefully, to where that now you're starting to grow your base back up because they see a path to the future. And so all of that...
Sorry. I think Vice Chair of Fire, I think, mentioned that there was eighteen thou, asked the question about eighteen thousand dollars and to train?
About eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve. Okay, so anyhow, you, you know, if you, you reduce turnover, you save that money.
Exactly. If you're not having to regenerate that every single time, you're saving that per person.
You can get that, you get that money if, if you're, and we should measure turnover and, and we should measure turnover and we should, we should calculate that number. Because if you're, if you're, if you're keeping people, then it, it might end up saving...
And I can get him an exact number on, or a much closer number on it, that's just coming off the top of my head. A couple of things, we talked about options, and, and I want to try to get this finished up real quick because I know that those other pieces come in, so people need something to eat. Sales tax is, currently, we are getting a portion of the sales tax, but that is, that if we're looking at other options other than increasing fire tax, because as we sit and talk about all of this stuff, the last thing that we want to do is burden our, our constituents anymore with any increase in taxes. So we want to throw out some other options. However, that might be the only option at this time until we can explore other options and make those viable options. So I think sales tax is something, I don't know that that's a real viable one, to be able to extend that in, and it's also something that usually expires after a period of time. Something that would require county ordinance, this might be able to minimize some of that, is a motor vehicle accident service fee, where we're charging for motor vehicle accidents out here on I-26, I-40, Lester Highway, Highway 25, wherever it's at. If, if somebody has a vehicle crash, then you're billing their insurance company for that. On the flip side of that, if somebody's, if somebody, is that just adding to the burden of insurance is the other question to that? So whenever you look at that, are you increasing insurance by charging for those things? Now, there are service fees that's built into your, every policy. If you look at your policy, there is money set in there for an emergency services fee for responding to a call. The only problem is, when we look at this and the number of motor vehicle accidents that we have per year in Buncombe County, that's not going to get the total amount of money that's necessary to hit the firefighter pay, especially in every fire district, but it might reduce that down after we find what that is. Something else might be doing something on permit service fees, increasing a cost in on permits whenever permits are issued, because people are getting services, they're getting fire protection while those buildings are being built. For example, if it's an apartment complex and they don't have to pay for it until it's completely done, they're still getting services on it while it's under construction. So that might be an opportunity. And then what we talked about, Anthony just talked about, non-tax property service fees if there's an opportunity there, and that's something that Mike would have to look into and determine that. And then the last thing that we have is the fire tax itself. But we want to explore those alternative options. That's something that I don't think we can solve today, but it's something that we can work with the county to look at alternative options. Most of these do, would require ordinances by the county commissioners to put into play, but I think it's some options that we can look at and explore and see what it is. The, the greatest thing and the information that we have brought to you today is to understand that as we have a systemic problem, we are also looking for systemic solutions in the firefighter pay and the increase in cost from NFPA and some of these other places. But we also have, we also want you to understand that it's also individualistic problems as well, and that's for each one of those boards and the fire chief to look at and, and determine how to best meet, how to, how to best come up with a solution for their needs. And so that's something that's going to have to be done in each fire district to come in, but we're able to arm them with that information so that they can work towards that. Lastly, all of these people that you see sitting up here on this side of the room, number one priority is protecting the people of Buncombe County. That's their number one priority. To do that, to the best of their ability, is by having good people that do that for them, and people that are passionate about their job and can afford to do their job. And that's the number one priority that we have. If we can take care of our people, they can take care of the community, and that's what we're here for. And with that, I'll entertain any other further questions, or we can all go eat some more pizza?
And yet, we can't give them resources to live? We, we have firefighters living in the poverty range, and I know we want to explore all options, but to go back to that fire tax, when you say, if we raised it two cents just on the fire tax, for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, it would be an increase to that homeowner of fifty dollars a year. Now, people go out to dinner at least once a year, a dinner is more expensive than that. To me, that, short of those other things, I don't see how anybody can look themselves in the mirror without trying that, because to continue to have firefighters living in a poverty range in this community, well, they can't even afford to live in this community, is unconscionable to us, and we're not doing what we need to do. But thank you, and thank you again for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. All right, so, Commissioner, we, this was great information. Thanks to everyone who put this together, Tim, all the guys from the fire districts. This was super informative, so I'm really glad we did this. Obviously, lots to think through. We're not going to solve it all today, but this will be really, really helpful as we start going through our budget process, to think through the different, the different ways we can get at some of these issues. So this was, this was one of the informative presentations I think we've had at our, our work session, so thanks so much. Commissioner, do you guys want to keep plowing ahead, or do we want to take a quick break before we got the next item? Is on the EMS, right? So do you guys want to take a break or keep, keep at it?
Please, a quick break.
All right, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll start back up at two o'clock.
All right, thanks, everybody. And we've got Jerry Behan at TSO on the discussion around emergency management services budget. So Jerry, thank you very much for being with us. Thanks for all you...
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm on here. Now, I think I'm on. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's an honor to be here. Glad we've got a big enough room to have this meeting here, but anyway, got a couple of people with me today. Got BJ Freeman, my administrative assistant, who's done a lot of work on putting all this stuff together. And Johnny Wilson is our nine-one-one supervisor. He can be talking a little bit about the nine-one-one operation. When you look at our budget on emergency services, there's more than just one department included. You've got radio or nine-one-one communications, emergency management, and EMS. There's two things that right now are not included. One of them is the Public Safety Answer Point Fund, and that's the money that's collected each month on your telephone bills, support the nine-one-one system. And the Public Safety Training Center, which they have four people down there previously were in the planning budget, and they've been moved to my budget, but this is a change of dollars there as of January the first. I'm going to start out just a little bit, have Johnny Wilson talk to you about the nine-one-one system, and then we'll get into the number of calls that system gets each year and how they're going to happen. Johnny, if you want to take it in. Yes, sir, thank you. Nine-one-one center, we answer all the calls for Buncombe County City of Isla. We process those calls and track them through the CAD system. We coordinate all responses and disaster recovery efforts, develop hazard recovery plans and implement them through Jerry. We've got, our staffing is basically five people around the clock and during the busy times, it jumps to six. So you can bring the totals up. These are the nine-one-one calls. You'll see two thousand and twelve, our system is recorded through a state system, it's called ECAT, and two thousand and twelve, they started halfway through the year, so that's why that, that number is low. It goes up and down as far as the numbers. The numbers you see on the screen are the actual calls, including business lines as well as nine-one-one lines. And two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, they're kind of the same. Two thousand and sixteen's a little bit low, and the ECAT is playing with that system to see exactly, trying to filter out abandoned calls and such as that, to where we actually see actual calls as opposed to calls that have dropped out of the system. So that is the difference in the, that call number. Calls for service, you can see a steadily increase in it. Two thousand and fifteen, a little below seventy thousand. This includes all of Buncombe County Fire Departments, Buncombe EMS, and the National Fire Departments. You have an increase slightly. Two thousand and seventeen was a substantial increase, and as you can see, two thousand and eighteen is July first to yesterday at five o'clock. And if that's, keeps on that trend, we'll go probably over eighty thousand for the year for two thousand and eighteen. EMS incidents is the next one that's broke out, just from Buncombe County EMS. You can see two thousand and thirteen is a little bit less than twenty-five thousand, two thousand and seventeen, right at twenty-nine thousand calls for service. So that service is exploding, and I didn't have the information for just EMS yesterday, but it's well on its way to, to top this year's totals. Okay, a little bit of camp along with, back to page four, your hand out there, on the services we provide. Of course, we answer, Johnny just explained to you, and process all the nine-one-one calls for Buncombe County and the City of Isla. Notify response units for fire departments and EMS to track the responses. We dispatch all fire departments. Only thing we do not dispatch is the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department and the National Police Department. They're in our center, but they do their own dispatching. As far as the emergency management side, we coordinate all disaster response and recovery elements. We've been fortunate that we didn't have a hurricane Harvey, we didn't have any serious after effects of that, or the hurricane that came up through Florida or Puerto Rico. A lot of times, if we have a storm that comes in on the Gulf, about two days later, we get a tremendous amount of rainfall, and that affects Swananoa River, Vipor, and it couldn't be anywhere in Buncombe County. But it's been some time since we've had a full-scale disaster. Thank goodness, a knock on wood there. We develop hazard and recovery plans to implement during a disaster. We also work with everything from nursing homes to schools, to large businesses on developing their disaster plans. Recently, as an example, Medicare came out with some new guidelines for anybody who receives Medicare payments, and they have to develop, excuse me, a new disaster plan, and is quite involved, and that just went into effect this month, and we're trying to work our way through that with a lot of these facilities. We conduct fire inspections in the county. We do Woodford, we don't do Wickerville, we don't do Black Mountain, do Little Forest, Isla, that's their own, and we do Montre. We do those on a regular basis. Respond to fires and conduct investigations. Arson tasks, of course, is part of my budget, and that's comprised of two people, one hired by the county, one hired by the city. There are also, in addition, committed fire arson investigators, they're certified law enforcement people, where they can investigate and arrest, make arrests if necessary, do in-depth arson investigation. And then we respond, or provide EMS service at paramedic level throughout Buncombe County. Johnny talked to you about the number of nine-one-one calls, he talked to you about the number of calls for service. EMS incidents, twenty-seventeen was a little over twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand and seventy-seven, something like that. If you come over to BJ to look at the personnel, we have, at present time, a hundred and fourteen people on staff. We've got a hundred and ten people, and when you add the four from AB tech, from the Public Safety Training Facility down there, those four people, with them, that they're in my budget as of January the first, it brings you to a hundred and fourteen. Looking at the jail, we have a proposal here to provide paramedic level service for the jail, and that will add another six people, or seven people to that, which will bring it up to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-one, if that's the way that, that the board sees fit to go with it. Our partners, partnerships, of course, we partner with all of the fire departments, both volunteer and municipal, and Buncombe County Rescue Squad, that's a separate agency from the fire department. They've been in business since nineteen sixty-two. City of Isla, of course, we share the nine-one-one communications with them, facilities, resources. We share costs, we have a cost share program. They provide funding for three of our dispatchers since we dispatch Isla Fire Department, and then we in turn provide some funding money for them, or the backup center, which is over in the, in the Isla Police Department, where their communications used to be. If something happens to us out at the nine-one-one center, they can just pick up and go down there. That equipment is sitting there and it's hot all the time, or they can start dispatching, and we won't lose the capability. Local schools and colleges, we've been working a lot, particularly Buncombe County Schools, on developing their emergency plan over the past few years. And incidentally, the state of North Carolina, State Emergency Management, used what the Buncombe County School System came up with as a model plan to share with counties across the state. We do educational programs, do a lot of career recruitment. Sometimes we'll have a group of our people stacking a table or something where we have conferences going on or different things, to try to recruit people and bring them into Buncombe County from other areas. Department of Public Safety, we handle all of the homeland security grants for Buncombe County. They come through, emergency managers that come through, the Department of Public Safety, State Emergency Management Agency, and then down to the different counties. We also participate on a regional group of people, group that's about eleven western counties, and we make determinations on, based on the amount of dollars that we get each year through Homeland Security, what we're going to spend that for. We try to have every county at the same level, and we've been doing that probably for about fifteen years. Centers for Disease Control, we've got some funds that come down through health and social services, and we have been managing that grant for them, and preparedness in the response to health crises that may come up from time to time. We handle the funds that go to the North Carolina Forest Service, which each county has to provide some matter of funding, I think there is like a twenty percent, twenty percent of the budget, something like that, and that, those dollars are in, have to be in the emergency management budget. Isla Composites Squadron, that's a similar program, and those people participate, if you have even a small plane wreck, crash or something, or a larger one, they also have people that can assist us with their cadets, and train them in search techniques, to where if we had a search for a lost person, they could come out and work with us. They can also do some flyovers for us if we needed them, particularly if we had to be looking for a lost tiger or somebody back in, back in the mountains from time to time. Some of the challenges that we have, that we're faced with, major events, and that could be something where we end up with disaster declaration. I think the last time we had our... I think the last time we had a declaration here was a snowstorm, what, four years ago, four, five years ago, something like that. Party Rock Fire this past year, that was a disaster declaration, that was a little bit different from floods, or tornadoes, or hurricanes, or events such as that, but anyway, that was a disaster situation. And Buckham County, through the county, what we had supplied, and what the fire department supplied, not including the city of Ixta, we got a check for about $450,000 to reimburse us, so we take care of the paperwork for things like that. Mass care, if we had to evacuate a facility, hospital, nursing home, I may have noticed on the news where they evacuated a nursing home in Transylvania County, a couple of days ago, got water, I think a pipe broke, and they had to evacuate the residents. We handle things like that, any kind of mass care, if you had mass injury, mass big accident situation, where you get a lot injured people, then we lead agency on that. The thing that affects us probably the most is population, as you know, Buckham County's growing every month, every year, and the population's aging, and that affects us. I read an article a couple of weeks ago, where it talked about Obamacare, and even affecting ambulance services, because more people were seeking the health, had health issues, were seeking treatment, which caused ambulance calls to go up somewhat, and they had factored that in, and that's something, quite frankly, I'd never even thought about, but that's something that we have to look at. This past year, for example, our call volume went up about 5%, last year it went up about 3%. So, you know, and that's normally about 2% to 3% per year, what we've been watching over the last 10 or 15 years. So, population demographics, that's something we're looking at all the time. Where are our calls, what kind of calls are we having, and certainly, opial crisis, which a couple of you have really been active in, Ellen and Mike, y'all have been going out and doing a lot of work on that, but that's something that you heard the fire departments talking about, where we're responding to a lot of overdoses, a lot more, and sometimes it's a repeat situation. Hopefully, we can somehow get our arms around that and do something about it. Increasing costs, that causes our call, cost per call to go up, both with medications, Narcad, for example, just the wear and tear of vehicles, our ambulance fleet, we've got a fairly new fleet, about a year old, we did switch from diesel back to gasoline because of the tremendous cost of repairing the diesel engines anymore. And if you have problems with them, you're looking at $17,000 plus just to replace one of those engines. So, anyhow, we went back, a lot of counties are going back to gasoline, and hopefully, that's going to work out for us, and something we look at every time that we change our Something that we look at, if we had, for example, somebody went out of ambulance business, any of the fire departments went out of business, or stopped for whatever reason, and the county being the primary provider would have to make up for that and pick up that call. So, that's something that, that hopefully, that's not going to happen, but it's something we prepare for. Now, when you're looking at staff recruitment and retention, it takes about three months from the time we hire a paramedic, until they're familiar enough with our protocols, our treatment protocols, everything about our service, before we can turn it loose, just like law enforcement, or fire, or anybody else. Our average tenure for personnel to come to work for Buckham County, the average is about 10 years. People that are eligible to retire from Buckham County over the next five years, we've got 11 of them right now, but hopefully, they may stay, not all go at one time. You've probably heard the Sheriff's Department wants, what, seven at the end of December, so, you know, that's hard, that's a hard gap to fill. Now, when you look at spending and revenue, we budget for uniform, fuel, medical supplies, training, personnel costs, is something that's there, that's just a given. Other county departments budget these costs for us, like Eric over here and his group, and the budget, people, the base salary, the mandatory overtime that we have, because we work a 56-hour work week, and we have to play time and age over 40 hours, so there's a built-in overtime there, but anyway, they keep up with that. Insurance, property insurance, liability, employee benefits, utilities, all of that's a given, that's just part of the budget, and unless that goes up for whatever reason, then, you know, there's nothing that we can do about that. When you look at the spending and the revenue, on page 15, the red line through there is what we, is our, pretty well our revenue, and the way the county has looked at this over the years, we collect on about 70% of our calls that we bill, but by the time you have these write-offs for Medicare, Medicaid, and other insurance companies, we only collect about 50% of the revenue that we bill. But, if you look at the red line on this, on this graph, that's about half of what it costs us to operate the EMS, and the county had looked for years, if we could recoup half of what that budget costs us, you know, we would be, that's what they want, what the commissioners had wanted to do, and that, you know, that's your call, we've got a budget of a little over 13, about 13 million dollars, I guess, and they're showing us collected about 6 million of that. Now, there's a possibility that we're going to be able to go up on our ambulance bills, but I don't have the figures yet. Medicare is supposed to give us maybe a 2% increase in what they are going to approve. If that's the case, I'll be back to y'all to see if you want to try to recoup that go up on our, on our bills. Personally, I think we should, if the money's there, I don't believe we don't pay the cost enough to operate EMS. But, looking here, you look at this chart, you've got the discretionary spending, revenue offset, expansion, nondiscretionary, and then the EMS revenues. On page 16, this is showing the budget broken out a little bit closer in some other ways. Page 17, showing the expansion budget, you see something there. This is what we estimate it will cost to put the paramedics in the jail. This is providing one paramedic 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Salarious benefits, $519,317, uniforms, office expenses, equipment, and that's that hard monitor. That's the one you heard Jeff Justice talking about, with the fire departments and their paramedic packages, is open monitor for $40,000. 10 years ago, if you did a comparison, they might have been $12,000, that's how much this equipment has gone up. But, anyway, this would be staffing with four full-time paramedics and three part-time paramedics. So, you can see, got a total of $575,017. It's expensive to operate something like that, it's expensive to operate ambulance service, it's just part of the healthcare cost anymore. Now, where does the money come from? Our charges for first response and transport services, $6.2 million, City of Ixta cost sharing for 911 dispatch, this is where they reimburse emergency services with the three dispatchers, $184,000, federal and state grants, $151,000, reimbursement for event expenses, $20,000, and what that is, if we go and do standbys, which we do quite a few of, and it's a for-profit operation, we charge them what our, basically what our cost is. If it's nonprofit, that's different, we don't charge for it, because they're mainly doing that for fundraising to take care of their operation. And in a nutshell, I know you all have to be back in town for the charter, but that's the EMS, or the emergency services request, and this time I'm entertaining any questions you've got.
Is there, are there any, any support for the paramedics now to deal with all the opium cases? How do they get support?
If you hear a big that, I've got, oh, I've got to hear something.
Is there any, with the paramedics responding to all the opium calls, what kind of support do they get? Do they get no support, I mean, there's more we can do?
No, I think they're getting less support.
Right.
You know, y'all have been all good, not circling any more.
So, tell me more about the six that's needed for the jail, where that number comes from, why is it, was six?
We learned that, they wanted, they wanted one, you know, they, what, terminal contract with nursing, nursing-
This is an additional service that was recommended following the review of the jail and some of the health risks and issues they're dealing with, we're actually out on request for proposals, so doing it internally with our EMS staff is one option. So, that's having one polyp paramedic, seven days a week, about 24 hours a day, in the jail, without an ambulance, they would not transport.
Yeah, they won't be doing any transport, they'll remain right there, and if they need to transport, they'll call one of our transport units to come over there to the jail and pick them up.
Plus, it's private.
They are, they will be able, and this came about, I think, recent, recently at their jail, this came about as a way to maybe recognize certain signs quicker, because the paramedics train to recognize fetal symptoms a lot quicker, maybe, a bit more.
It takes six to cover 24 seconds.
Maybe one person there, twenty-four hours a day, I mean, that's, that's what you have to, that you have to remember to be part of it, the fact you have to drive seven, so it's not like one second. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alright, everyone. Alright, well, Commissioner, are there any other items that we need to cover at this work session?
No, that's, that's not the question.
Well, I think, all, great information, Jerry, thank you for this initial presentation, it's helpful in getting the process started for us, and thanks everyone for being here today. I think we'll adjourn the work session, and we'll see some of you over at downtown offices.